All right, this time we'll call the regular county commissioner if we have a court. Pay me the bills.
I'll move, I'll say.
All in favor?
All right.
You have something, sir?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Okay, my name is Bodis Bridgers. And I moved here in 2012. And I stay on 1945 Burlington Road in Crockett. Yes, my Hancock.
We got half, I got part of it.
Okay, that's what my problem is, right? Um, let me get my glasses on here. Yeah, I didn't know if I can.
Yeah, just move on, move on.
So when I moved here in 2012, uh, there was a male in charge of the normal you call for road services to get the road drug. And he would make sure it happened on a routine basis each time I called. And then sometimes he would come out and just look at the areas I had discrimination with. Now there's a female in charge of the thing. I'm not trying to discriminate against her, but it seemed like she fails when it comes to the Dixon side dragging my side of Burlington Road. If you're gonna want their three to our Dixon, make that right there. They normally do it about three times. And that. Okay, and um, the Crocker side, they do it all the time. They've already did it about eight times this year. They even did it on the 30th of June, when it was raining, they did it yesterday. They did it on the first of July. And they keep that side pretty well hygiene. When I first moved here, they told my house was the sun alive. And another person told me, the guy that was here before, before the girl took over, he said it was up to that first house to my left, going back toward uh, 133. And um, but now, yesterday, you know, on the first, when Crocker did their side, and I'm not complaining about Crocker, but they only went six, sixty six meters past my house. So I don't know where the sunlight is at. You know, and I don't think no one to drag to know his sunlight is at, because it changes every week, every month since 2012, when they do drag. And what I'm trying to do is there's um, washout about eighteen, about thirty, coming down Brunswick Road back towards Hancock. And somebody's gonna hit that at nighttime and fall into that trash. And then there's multiple trenches on the road, and then multiple potholes. I understand that weather has a lot to do with this, you know? But if I'm telling you that it's only three times a year that Dixon drags my side of the road there, going back towards uh, Hancock, they do it uh, before school start, they do it, if there's a snowstorm, and they do it uh, to get rid of the leaves. So nothing hasn't happened since the leaves. Of this year.
Yeah, we've, we've been out there.
Yeah, but.
About three times already in first six months.
No, I can't, I mean, I believe you, that's what you say, but I'm talking about my hands on.
Well, I was, I was out there with them, where, what is your address on?
1945 Burlington Road.
1945.
Burlington Road, and that's where they turn around there when they do their service and stuff.
And you got like a, a wooden.
Wood picket, yeah, wood picket fence.
Yeah, that's, that's a turnaround.
Mm-hmm, and the guys, and the guys from Crocker side, they always make a, you know, a turnaround, no problem, they do a good job.
They turn there too.
Yeah, uh-huh. But uh, and if you come down there today, you will see, them sixty meters I'm talking about, or sixty, how many feet it is, uh, where the Dixon side has stopped. You know, you can see grass in the middle of the road and all that good stuff, you can tell anybody touched it in a while. So if they've been down that many times, you're saying, there's a failure in getting to my location.
Well, there's a new guy over there, and he probably don't know where the turnaround is at.
Yeah, but that's what happened every year since 2012, turnaround change, seems to move.
Yeah.
I'm about done here, I'm about done. Also, uh, there's a covert that was changed three years ago, one of the covers, uh, on that Dixon side. And I don't understand what supposed to happen when they take the old carpet off, it's still sitting there at the mouth of their new cover. And then it's washing out on both sides of their cover. You know, the water is and stuff when it comes down, so that cover that exposed the windows in the ground, it's supposed to be there now at present. And I guess that's about it. I just really want somebody to help me as a taxpayer to take care of the Dixon side of the road. You know, 'cause I got a thirty foot RV, and I be shook to death, I got a pace making my chest, I be shook to death, you know? So, and I drive a truck, and I drive a Hummer, you know, and they bounce all over the road and stuff, like come on that side. So my inconvenience is my inconvenience where going out is always go down the side, the drags, you know? All right, that's it.
I'll get it addressed for you.
Okay, and I called a girl last week, and asked her to get the guys out there, you know, and they still haven't made the check. But normally I have to call her about seven times a year to get somebody on the Dixon side to drag the road, and that shouldn't be my fault, you know, now I'm working for them, uh, doing their job. And one day, uh, a guy that was running for county commissioner, he came out to the house when I said that I was gonna come to the meeting, and he had a drug the next Monday. He came out the house on the Saturday, then he had a drug the next Monday.
Call that number.
Okay, alrighty.
Thank you all for this.
Yes, sir, you have a good day. I'll get, I'll get it looked at for you.
Okay, thank you so much.
And that, that old covert that's left, it, it's, they left it by the new one that they put in. That was probably before my time, but I'll, I'll get it picked up for you.
All right, thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
Split in the middle, we gotta turn around.
Yeah.
Always wished that we could always make one road one person. But it's hard to do.
Yeah, we've been out there three times already in six months. Yeah, yeah.
Cause that first house right there?
Oh, that, that's center. Yeah. Yeah, you should see that now.
Cause you did that out of your own pocket.
Yeah.
Get your car?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Your cars? They're on that slow boat from Ohio.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yeah, these people in Ohio take their cars. There's only two people that work on it.
Yeah.
From Ohio. Ohio is Ohio, doesn't it?
No, 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 we don't claim Cleveland in Ohio. Cleveland, it's, it's, it's home state. No, it's not.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
I had a question, uh, I asked yesterday, did we ever get that uh, bridge inspection check sent to MoDOT? Okay, she wanted me to confirm that letter dial.
You know, one person in Ohio, the same company also has Texas. But you never know where the guys coming from, if you're gonna get charged fifteen hundred.
Clock builder is in Ohio. But they have some people, so they subcompact that out, people all over the country.
I'm telling you. They're as slow as the clock.
Well, that's the same thing with shipping and everything else we get parts.
I was like, first time they told us what to do to think, but they go, you can't do that, they told us to do it. That cost us what, fifteen, eighteen hundred bucks?
Guess I should say, I, I have high hopes that I could go to today.
I got a truck, I got a truck that's been setting for three months, that new one that we got.
Yeah.
We've not driven it on the job one day since I've had it. It's been at the place getting a flat, the flatbed was put on in the day. They're waiting for a pigtail plug. They don't have a lot, the lights on the bed won't work. The wiring harness won't plug into anything, they got ordered a special plug from Benny Hanan, and it's been on back order for.
You know, there's a guy.
Been setting for thirty months.
That's the way, that's the way all of our stuff is, is just on back.
There's a young kid in Rawa that'll make them plugs.
Oh, yeah.
He makes them for race car drivers, like if you take a car and you wanna make it a stock car, he takes off everything that's on the car, he makes new plugs with all the wires unplugged together on both sides.
Yeah, but I guarantee his has to be done by this specifically.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I would, they won't accept.
Morning, yes.
I would imagine, yeah. I won't tell you what the company is, we'll call it. Yeah, that's uh.
Especially this time of year.
And we haven't got our cart money for a month, or our cell tax yet either, so. That'd be another three hundred and fifty thousand, probably. And we're expecting six hundred thousand from EMA any minute.
I do got a couple companies I think gonna give bids next week on the guardrail on Ross Bridge.
Um, it's just, it's just having, I mean.
The statements.
And then, yeah, these are the. And then there's opioid money, and then this extra copy, and we all sign off on it. Even notice the computer for emergency control and.
It has been relocated to.
Do we have chats too?
I just.
Hope it's awesome, thank you.
Sheriff, did you ever make contact with the Amish community?
Yes, I do. The uh, he was kind of upset that they weren't, cause they're supposed to be lit up at night, he was pretty upset that they weren't, so he was going to talk to everyone, to make sure that uh, now, they don't have lights, he has two poles with lanterns.
That's sufficient.
So, and they got the reflective, the triangle, but he uh, he said he wouldn't produce that I haven't been out back up to him.
I talked to them. They're all doing.
They uh, they passed by the house a couple days ago.
There's on seven.
Well, they had to, just ordered a bunch of fines thrown, and we've got a community moved in over here, so.
He was. We're supposed to.
Get nobody. Yeah.
Well, to be honest, he was going by a car, and. I mean, he was. But I did talk to him. I'll have any questions to me.
Oh, yes. Sheriff, do I understand, believe that you're saying that not upset requirement of traffic lights? Just wanna make sure, thank you. There is case law on that, and go ahead, under the Amish local area tape position.
You could, they'll follow.
Some of the more spirit Amish community, if they're dealing with the curving lanterns, that's why. Case laws, very, very. Just the Amish. Objection.
Up the wall that says a white. What, I was like. He said, what if, what if I have? You know, caller, and he, so I mean, that, that's.
Lanterns are considered an exception.
Got a question, the officer get arrested, sunrise beach.
I saw a report on that, I don't.
The question I had, I posted. Question, is there, is there a requirement that state of drug testing?
We get drug tested randomly every month. We never know who it is.
Select the military.
And this is supposed to.
Outside agency, that's.
Yeah, road, road and bridges tested random, randomly too.
Oh, do you really?
Uh-huh.
County policy, isn't it?
Huh?
That's county policy.
Really, all county employees?
Just.
Patrol car, county vehicle, we had to take a drug test.
Yeah, if we have a county employee involved in an accident, they immediately go take a drug test.
My first day on the job in 2017.
I want to go on the H8, have you bought him yet?
No, not yet. We have a good idea. Thanks to the tip line. Tip, tip app, and the app. We've been getting a lot. And if I could put out Facebook world, if you're on the app and you do submit a tip on our sheriff's app, uh, please put the name of the person you're giving the tip to, or the tip on, because I get a lot of tips, it just says.
I think he's over here, or she, or whatever.
And I don't know who the heck they're talking about. I get a lot of. And there's no, if they don't have an email address, they don't have no, cause it's anonymous, there's no way for me to, to check on who they're actually talking about. So I, I, I do get that quite a bit where it just, he's over here running from uh, I saw him yesterday, and he's held up here today, and I don't know who they're talking to.
But it is nice, uh, Bolno, I put out yesterday, directly from Long Sea.
Yeah.
So as soon as he went in, would like put that out.
I'm just to tell you he's over here.
Who is he?
Go catch him and find out. Wrong guy.
We could get pictures of Quip, big red dog, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not the guy.
You guys heard anyone on the seven bridge, call you?
I'm looking at the ends on the A.
There is, you know.
I've been online and looked at the, their plan or whatever. Very question that I have been asked is, are we gonna be able to exit off on the seven highway to go north towards Richland? So they are going to be able to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what my understanding, you know.
I thought it was just, just to go over top of the bridge. You can get off from all of this, you can't go across.
Yeah.
That was saying it really.
Westbound won't be able to go to the south side, right?
Yeah.
Eastbound won't be able to go north.
Yes, right.
And that's what I thought, but I just, I have. I've had several people ask me that question, so. This is a joke, Daryl, so don't put that. Someone asked me if you guys were gonna pave Republican through there, because the last time they closed it, they paved raceway.
Make it easier for people.
Make it easier for people.
I recognize it's a joke, remember.
Well, I get the green field, I picture my son because, oh boy, his third beat month.
The border's gonna build up.
Are they?
It's gonna, I was watching a clip this morning where it's gonna be near a.
Have you all seen that Republican, who said that it would be whole bellies for alligators with X number of million, X number of millions of meetings? You gotta ask what enters some people's minds before they open the mouth in front of campus.
Well, uh, the uh, what, the Rala Facebook page, they put out the jokes about Kansas City Chiefs coming, something like that, and we'll be seeing that on there for two, I mean, we'll have Alcatraz here in Rala, so.
Considering Rala and its community, it's great, that'd be a great way to increase clicks and trigger the new people at the university.
I hadn't been to Rawa in a long time, and I was driving, and I see this robot car taking some food down the road to something, and I'm like, what?
You've never seen those?
No. Oh, you'll, you'll flip.
White robots, they deliver food all around.
To the campus.
Around the camp, campus there.
They pull up, and they go out there and read, yeah, I see, I'm like, what in the world is this?
But it used to be the old.
That's a freaking caliph.
I, I thought the cops had had a little robot, yeah, I guess. It was at the stop sign looking, car went behind it.
Rala PD does have a little, it looks like.
Well, yeah, but when you see this, you can stop and get a Big Mac or whatever they're carrying.
There used to be when they have the food court, you know, before they did that new special or whatever, they, they were all parked outside.
Coolest thing I ever seen.
And we see the guys come out there with the iPad or whatever, they programmed the.
Address or whatever.
Yeah.
And then they go out.
R2D2.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what to put in it, but it's kinda neat to watch it, because you know, they'll put those traffic, you know, poles up or whatever, so vehicles can't go over and hit, you know, certain things. And they'll run a lot, ride them through, and like bump them a couple times, and then it'll slowly like move around it, and then go, it's pretty neat to watch. Yeah.
It stopped at the crosswalk and walked for traffic and then crossed, it was a, it was crazy.
They're really neat.
Yeah, go up there around the campus and you'll see one. R2D2.
Oh, Daryl's been here.
They got a waiter that bring the food out to this robot.
Well, that's, we was talking about them ones in, them ones in Rawa, have you seen them around the campus?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. First time I seen one of them, I was like, what is this? And they said they're taking food to them.
Yeah, but they did.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it.
The one in Bolidali and Salem, you go down the road, you're too, you go down what lane you're on. Next dinner, here comes this robot up here. What the hell is this?
Not yet.
Uh.
No, uh, I would imagine it's, you know, so, they're all gonna come together, they have to come from Dodge. Well, I'll see one, one set of all those tires. I'll see him today.
Of course, again, full stories of ER in Louisiana, guy come to March here, snap, that was a big snap, it's a lot. And there was a game board in there. I guess the three kids went out and wrestled with Snap, and he holds this thing up, look like, I think he just reached out and, boom, locked on, he wouldn't let go. When they finally got it off of him, it's a emergency room conservation agent. Right, seem a big ticket. They were, they were messing with it, they picked it up, this was a big Snap and Pearl. And they were jacking with it, he had it like this, a little Snap and Pearl's neck reached out, just grabbed it. Locked on, he wouldn't let go, they had to give him the first year. The first thing they call the conservation, conservation comes up, brings them all, so when Dave up that thing dies, and you get charged.
Oh, wow.
Finally all the. Like, you're gonna sleep for a minute, they have enough heart positive on this thing, I don't know.
They can reach a lot farther than.
Yeah. I used, or called that, that's on their house years ago, with a slip, that thing come out like that far.
Do you have a comment from one of the viewers?
Huh?
I promised one of the viewers.
Yeah.
Robert Burrows.
Well, Bobby Burrows, yeah.
What are you going to pass, when I come, leaving the Coberts out, I've been waiting for two months.
I don't know what color you're talking about.
I told him, just know the potion's address.
Yeah, you know where it's at. That was a property with the trailer. That was a property with the trailer.
Down, oh, down on. Yeah.
Let's see this, the road.
I've never been asked about him.
Maybe a different.
I don't, I don't know if that.
I don't know if that's the road he's talking about, that's the one he's got property.
But yeah, where the, where the culvert is located, I'm not, yeah. Last thing I had out of him, he sent me a, a deal on Facebook because we was, and I went down there and marked where the county stopped and it's fifty foot from that.
All the trailer.
Trailer. Anyway, I get a deal and he says, well, I've done my homework, sir, and I got paperwork to show that this is a road and thank you very much and. I mean, I didn't say that it wasn't a road, but it's not a county maintained road. I mean. Yeah.
What brings you, that's her, her thing.
He come with take measure, he sizing you up, see how much he's gonna raise you.
Got to assess the situation. Well, if you're going to Kate, maybe I guess that means access yet to be sure with everybody else.
I did, I did have a conversation with Travis Elliott one day.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. He's willing to. But I got to, I got to talk to some others. In our associations. But uh. If you guys wanna send a letter. On the app, if you're.
I'm bored.
For their appearance.
Yeah, I'd like to hear their explanation of it. I want to know, I like a lot of it, but I'd like to know their explanation of that and I'd like to hear why these other counties are going forty years and got by without raising them.
So you want to, you want the date on the, on the twenty first of July or you want it to the last Saturday or?
Twenty first of.
On day one.
Huh?
If you want.
Day one.
Summon them, summon them on day one.
Yeah.
So it's twenty first of July.
That's what we have on. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, they're, they're, I think Little Cindy hasn't been evaluating forty years?
Yeah, forty five, forty six.
Forty six years. They haven't had their houses. That test. Yet we gotta have ours done every two year. I don't think they're playing it fair to me.
Well, county assisted that hasn't had the houses discussed in forty six years. And second, it was county, not the city.
I see Little County, I think.
Those can, I'm asking because I don't know.
Yeah. Daryl, they pick on certain counties. You notice which ones they don't pick. Where they get the most votes, uh.
They pick on certain counties, notice the ones that don't pick.
Yeah, they, they don't pick on the ones where they get the most votes, uh. That's true. I am pretty sad. Let them come down here. I would love for them to come down and explain it to me.
Now, when you're saying they.
Tax commission. There are three people with three tax commissions.
The reason I'm asking is every statewide elected official now is Republican or legislature vote houses or we're voting Republican. How many Republicans are in the city of St. Louis? It doesn't seem there are a lot of votes there. But I, I get your point, but that might have been more the case with previous governors a few years back.
All I know is. It seems like there's probably eighty, eighty-five counties that state gets picked on all the time while the other ones just get to run and.
Seems like there are eighty.
It's not fair. Our constitution here in Pulaski County, I feel like are being, are being picked on. Every two years when people, and it's not Daniel's fault. Daniel's regulated. All of them are regulated. They just fail to do their job. Daniel's doing his job. So why should Pulaski County keep paying more and more and more and more for these other counties for the last forty-six years that's sitting there just grinning?
Oh, I'll tell.
Yeah.
Thank.
For you.
I just. When you dig into it, it seems to be. We all pay our fair share. The others, this state don't have.
We all pay our fair share, but there's no state don't have to.
We got, we've got senior citizens that are having trouble with electric bills, buying medicine, a lot of things are, they gotta pay more when other people around the state don't have to. They're sitting. Sitting back from the eighties. Seventies and eighties, they had, since between seventy-five and nineteen eighty, their taxes have been raised on their houses. I go into homes all the time, be senior citizens, they struggle, they do. We got young kids finding homes now that. They struggle. One just bought a home, didn't he? Young. Why should, why should they pay more than the ones up? No. Bring it off my soapbox. Sorry, call with batteries up, call my radio for the weekend. They're gonna need this to be. They were cheap, really. It's twenty seven hundred, and that was, how long ago I got that one? Back a long, long, I bought that one. It was twenty seven hundred bucks. Mostly. Handheld. Casey just asked, or anything where I could talk to him.
How much?
Twenty seven hundred bucks back then.
Just a scanner or can you talk?
I can talk.
Oh.
So both of my guys, I got the most, I got the other, uh.
Right.
One bad or one of the other.
He has an actual code because of his work as head of county for emergencies. He actually has a number that he can use to call in.
He, the sheriff gave me, he gave me the badge three eighty.
And no, no, we're not talking the same thing.
So if I were going for three, nobody knows.
I know, only when they say the code, but you hear somebody saying, uh, this.
I've only, I've only talked to him one time, I hang on the channel. I was on seeing Robert.
Gene actually has a code as well as.
Trying to talk to. Yeah.
And also Travis told Daniel we might have a answer on the marijuana tax by the end of August.
Yeah, he says everything's been submitted to the Supreme Court, to the Supreme Court. And uh. His comment to me was he didn't expect a response immediately. He said it would probably be ninety days, up to ninety days. I think he said they submitted everything, maybe the seventeen, nineteen, twenty, something like that. So he said he probably expected.
Or August, so I just kind of fear the end of August.
At least we didn't have a big sun this year with the dry weather in fourth of July.
Oh, I know. I think last year the. Fire departments were in here asking us to do a statewide.
Do.
Countywide, statewide, countywide, sorry, I misspoke. Countywide ban, because it was so dry. Yeah.
So fire department today's now gets used by that.
Fire department's playing after in California.
Oh.
Oh, man.
Oh, yeah.
Seven people.
Three of them were brothers.
Yeah, seven people missing, I think, still.
Then after explosions, they say, you know, there was this, the firewood show was going on.
Oh, yeah.
You can imagine how much powder is left.
You know, I've often.
You see the building explode, it was like. And then you see the after pictures they showed this morning after everything's out and done. It's blew that stuff everywhere and there wasn't nothing but metal frames and some of the metal frames were, they got so hot, they just sort of bending over.
I've always wondered about like ammunition house fires. Is that, is that a threat with firefighters?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I've actually asked Chief Rico on that.
They tell me it blows the side of the case now.
Yeah.
And the projectile don't.
Throw, you can throw them in, fifty-five gallons drum, it's on fire, it'll wall. But it blows the casing.
Yeah, and the bullet, yeah.
Yeah, it don't.
Because it ain't got no way to harness the energy, I guess.
Well, what the barrels for to force it, kind of like a plastic explosives, where they got front facing explosives, rear facing, you know.
It don't matter, you hear a bunch of pop, 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 pop.
Chief Rico has said the problem you deal with is when people have a gun on their bin stand that's loaded, then you can run into the problems, but just ammunition loses an issue.
Right.
There have been firefighters who have been shot by exploding ammunition out of the gun, uh, when they go into a house.
It goes off and got the barrel, yeah, it could be injected up the barrel.
I mean, not that I have any ammunition. I think I don't.
I got real on my guns.
I can see it. I don't have a gun. Yeah, I dumped them all in a river somewhere or a lake.
Put them up there. Don't have to worry about, don't have to worry about that right now.
Right, exactly. Sure, renew your CCW. Yeah, fact, I think.
You know, I forgot to do mine in the last, well, you know.
You still renew it?
Yeah, I gotta.
I'll get your money.
I gotta do mine. Give you the money that remains.
Gotta pay a fee.
Hey, mine, mine, mine expired.
Something I don't, that's something I don't have.
Got your over there.
Yeah.
Can, can you, anyone is.
Nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. No, it, it's a small one.
Convenience.
The ones that gets me, you know, the ones that just carry on out. Here, just walk around and you can pull it right off of them. It's not.
Yeah, there was people at the fair this past week, open carry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And if you don't bother me, but some of them, I'll let you have that.
There's some of them, well, he's had, he had, he had a war, a war eagle or.
Red eagle.
Forty-four, that's huge. It's always signed, Buck. He's breaking. Don't make a better sense.
Sheriff Fane, you got a question?
Mine expired about a month and a half ago, we still.
Most of the, Lord knows, I need your money.
Can you carry it without the two weapons, or how do you carry it?
Do what?
How do you carry a weapon that you did without? Just gotta keep the weapon.
Being plain sight. Visible. It's gotta be visible. Everybody asks if you have any weapons in the vehicle. I mean, that's good news when they stop me. Yeah. One over there.
Come ask that question.
Well, I usually tell them anyway because I don't want nobody to freak out.
It's technically none of our business because.
I've been asked before and I've been, and I've told. I mean, with a warrant or something like that, like.
Yeah.
Or your own probation parole, but.
Or if you're having reaching the glove box before the registration, underneath or whatever. He might want to let him know.
Yeah.
That's just a pick away. Yeah, I'm reaching in there.
They can always get that, that's the switch. Screen goes up.
Fifty dollars for renew, if it expires more than thirty days, it's ten dollars addition, ten additional dollars for up to six months.
What?
Then you have to.
Ten dollars per month, up to six months.
I have been through here.
Ten, ten dollars.
I can't take your money.
So you got a next.
I'm gonna go down.
I think it's cash.
Actually, I don't think they have it set up yet, but you can ask, they, they do, uh, we just got, we just got a card reader just for, just for that.
I can use the, can I borrow your debit card?
Yeah. Second Tuesday next.
I left my wallet at home. Yeah.
So you're gonna go do the testing and everything over again or whatever.
Well, you're not protected, can you see?
Yeah, dude, he goes with me wherever I go. He goes with me wherever I go.
See, if the other state doesn't have rest of us, you can be trouble.
I went to Delaware.
All my citizens be protected.
I went all the way to Delaware, all the way to Missouri, Florida.
Yeah, you never got stopped.
Thanks, Daniel.
There's only two states that don't have the risk, risk proxy and then it's Illinois and Delaware or someplace, Illinois, Rhode Island or some.
Around us?
Yeah.
I would go to Illinois.
Every state around.
I don't trust nothing that comes off of that phone.
Yeah. Eight, six, seven, five, three.
So if he tells.
You're gonna listen to him when he's giving you.
I'll do, yeah, I'm not, not believing.
After he gave you the bridge number, you're gonna listen to him?
Ah, yeah.
Are the commissioners done with all the real business for the day? Does Sheriff maybe want to comment on the recent news media coverage of the situation on Shrine Club? What? Motorcycle issue? Want to give you the opportunity to say publicly some of the, because of what happened with news media coverage? Anything you might want to say?
It's over and done with.
It's over. They didn't have it.
Illinois, Michigan, California, Nevada. Oregon, Washington, New York, Rhode Island, Rhode Island, New Jersey, blah, blah. They don't have this possibility with us.
Let's see, it's been the least, didn't you, you know, like.
And then everybody but Arkansas has risk policy with conditions. Arkansas, it's. Seminoles, these are. What those restrictions are, I mean. There's a map that shows you. With you all on the.
Doug, what's new with you? Catching a fish?
Should you do anything? Yeah, some fish, that's my only fish I caught this. It's got a personal base and lawyers and all this. It's like my rec ball game, I love to play, but I'm not good. I mean, I just love it, but just love it. Down in Panama, play all day, you never, never win a game. I'm out there, I'm hustling.
You were fishing out of the lake?
Yeah. You bought me a boat, a deck boat. A little angry.
War saw, yeah.
Yeah, war saw. It's compromise between a ranger, fast boat, give two people to get, all, it's like I'm trying to be all wearing. On two boats, just one of them good fishing, made much too soon. Retiring to get the deck boat, I think it's. Got two fishing spots in the back and a front, so I'm taking those out, get on two light boats.
You got the radar?
Oh, yeah, we got everything.
You can't catch the dragon fish with.
That sucks. Doug, no.
Change your bait.
I got tech box for days, that's worse for apartments, I got everything you could credit card and buy. Now, my daughter-in-law's a fishing pool, she got two five pound bass right off the floor, right across the, I mean, I used to watch the atmosphere. Same thing I'm doing, black and, black and the trout juice and jigs, rough bottom. Boy, I'm, she's got a hundred dollar pole, I got three hundred dollars. Great, great. She's just.
Reeling them in.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm doing everything, I'm looking at YouTube, watching, watching. That's your problem. Yeah, that's right, she's, I was just fishing, she's, she's, she's not even trying, um.
Just fish. This is for Truman, my brother had a place, he was on that water every day, we go catch fish all the time. He knew the weather, the temperature, whatever was going on, he knew exactly how.
Wind direction.
Wind direction, he, he would know how far off the bank, how deep. He would sit there and he'd tell me if you don't anybody want, he was bored. I'd send people up there to get on the boat with him, he loved it, he'd take him and catch it, he'd get out and get him out, limit their fish. That's what he loved to do.
I've been fishing since about nineteen ninety-five, so.
Hmm, yeah.
I.
You've been fishing everything that you took off us.
Well, that. Jessica, about for the story. We went and fished, we were in Alexandria, Virginia, we went down to the river and there was a bait shop, little convenience store, went across the bridge. Park. We went, got our, we got bait and stuff and then we went down on that same side of the river. Big, huge, I don't know what river it was, but it was huge, it was, it was wide. We walked down probably about a mile and a half to a little spot, we stopped, we started fishing. Um. Started getting dark, we're like, man, we need to pack up, so we started packing up and it now is dark. We started walking back. As I sit here, I will tell you, and Joel and Jesse can vouch for this, when we came out, off, when we came back to the road. We had to walk across the bridge to our car.
You still know, you still know how he did that, huh?
We got, we got.
Turned around.
We got aliens or something, I don't know, but I swear to you, we, we went down that same side. And when we walked out, out at night, we didn't cross the dragon river, there's no way to cross it. We came back and we had to walk across the bridge, we were just like. What in the hell just happened? We, we drove across the bridge in the car. But when we came back out, we had to cross that bridge on full. Alien abduction, I don't, I don't know.
Do you need a good detective for the sheriff's part? Because, listen.
No, no.
Mountain was involved here, Sheriff.
We were not, no, we were not drinking.
Alcohol was involved.
We did not, nope, we did not, we had no.
Here's another one I'm gonna call you out on, you was fishing in the river, but you didn't know what river it was, but did you have a fishing license to be fishing there?
We did not. This was Virginia, this was not the highest, folks, this was, here we go, Virginia.
There we go.
Get, get the gavel out.
What's the state of?
Was it Virginia or what else?
What's it called, what's the, what's the limitations on, on this?
Well, it's better to beg for forgiveness and ask for permission.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. Some states still require military.
Well, I tell you what's bad though, I, I know a couple that was fishing, well, it was, it was a family and they was at a local area lake. The kids was fishing, unless you're sixteen or over, you don't have to have fishing license, well, the kid. Got his poles tangled up, he handed it to his mom to hold the pole, she didn't have a fishing license. There's Mr. Green Jeans with the binoculars and he comes down and gives the mom a ticket for holding the fishing pole for fishing. Uh, so, yeah, it's. And even if you're, uh, gigging, you're running the motor and not gigging, you gotta have fishing license.
Yeah, you're, you're there.
You're, you're part of it.
You're part of.
Yeah, so it's, it's a fine line of whether you have to have them or not.
Looks like. States murder, you're in the vehicle, you're just guilty as a person.
But it feels good to violate the law every once in a while, doesn't it?
Finally. Looking for your own camera, because I like the way it's walking through, I'll say that.
Uh, well, you know what, it. Everybody, yeah.
Is sufficient for you. Well, the question is, you have to in nineteen ninety-five.
Imagine the stone age.
That's your limitation, I ran out on that.
Yeah. You know what, a lot of times you don't, there, there's so many laws, I mean, you can be on one side of a rock and not have to be on this side and be fishing in a different state.
We go fishing down in Oklahoma, Lake Texoma, well, you, you look at, I actually gotta look at the fish screen, it'll tell you when you cross into Texas. But that, by, by just a fishing license for that lake only, it covers wherever you go. But I was watching my Texas award to show the other day, they were on Texoma.
Yes, in nineteen ninety-five, you generally needed a fishing license. Well.
Fond's in the mail.
Keyword is generally, if you have a voluntary exemption in that state. And Virginia's one of the ones that.
Virginia wants to match me for fishing with our license.
That's right.
I'm definitely a very good fisher.
I'm not gonna give the name, but we have an Australian international military soldier here who got picked up for an issue without a license. And he took a, took a Facebook photograph of that and sent it back to his relatives, especially, and said, he was legit, let us know.
Game off, baby.